Good evening and welcome to the May 7th meeting of Troy City Council. I'm Marty Baker, President of Council. Please silence your electronic devices for the duration of the meeting. We'll begin with the invocation by Mr. John Turelliger, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Let each of us pray in our own way. Please watch over and protect those who guard us in seen and unseen ways. We ask for help that our country can become more unified, less loud, and more directed to "we." Help us make our differences our strengths. May our words lead to kindness, not confrontation. We give thanks for the opportunity to be us, to live where we live, to appreciate the freedoms we have, and to worship as we choose in our own way. We give thanks. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Knight, please call the roll. Mr. Swazer. Mr. Kendall.
Here.
Mr. Heath.
Here.
Mr. Phillips.
Here.
Mr. Severt.
Present.
Mr. Twilliger.
Here.
Mr. Lutz.
Here.
Mr. Twist.
Here.
Mrs. Oda.
Here.
I move we excuse Mr. Swazer.
One second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Heath to excuse Mr. Swazer. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll. Mr. Kendall.
Yes.
Mr. Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Lutz.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mrs. Oda.
Yes.
Excused. Mrs. Knight, please read a summary of the minutes of the April 16th meeting of Troy City Council. Minutes of Council, April 16, 2018. Committee reports, Safety and Health Committee. Recommended legislation be prepared authorizing participation in the multi-jurisdiction Hazard Mitigation Plan. Streets and sidewalks committee recommended legislation be prepared authorizing bidding for paving program. Utilities committee recommended that legislation be prepared authorizing a contract for the 2018 sewer lining project and also for a bidding, the replacement of the UV disinfection system. Resolution number R-12 2018, multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan participation was given first reading and adopted. Resolution number R-13 28, contract for the paving program, first reading and adopted. Resolution number R-14 28, contract for sanitary sewer relining project, first reading and adopted. Resolution number R-15 2018, contract for the UV disinfection system replacement project, first reading and adopted. Ordnance number O-18 2018, final plat Stonebridge Meadows was given second reading following various comments, Council adjourns 7:25 PM. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
Move to adopt. You may answer. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Twist to accept the minutes. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll. Mr. Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Lutz.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mrs. Oda.
Yes.
Mr. Kendall.
Yes.
Minutes are approved. We'll move on to committee reports. We have two reports this evening from the Finance Committee. Chairman, Mr. Tom Kendall.
Okay, thank you, Madam President. The first report is regarding a loan to CIC regarding revitalization of Sherwood Shopping Center. On April 24th, this committee met to consider loaning $1.4 million to the Community Improvement Corporation of Troy, known as the CIC, regarding the Sherwood Shopping Center revitalization. The CIC would in turn loan those same funds to the proposed redevelopers of the shopping center, Sherwood of Troy LLC. The loans would be adequately secured. Recommendation, it is recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared to authorize a loan to the Community Improvement Corporation of Troy in the amount of $1.4 million with the terms outlined herein, authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to execute documents related to the loans and to extend the current 180-day moratorium by an additional 180 days on the processing issuance and approval of new occupancy and zoning permits for certain uses and certain properties in the North Market Street area. Extending the moratorium will assure that all the loan processes can take place prior to the moratorium expiring, and the moratorium can be lifted earlier if appropriate to do so. We also support emergency legislation to expedite the loan processing. It was noted that a reappropriation may be needed to expend the loan amount, and this is respectfully submitted by Mr. Swazer, Mr. Severt, and myself as Chair.
Are there any questions from Council? You may continue, Mr. Kendall.
Okay, thank you. The second report regards ODOT cooperative purchasing for road salt. On May 4th, committee members Kendall and Severt met to consider authorizing the city to participate in the bid of the Ohio Department of Transportation for road salt. To be included, specific legislation must be enacted and presented to ODOT no later than May 18th so that ODOT is aware of the quantities to be included in their bid. It is recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared authorizing the city of Troy to participate in the ODOT cooperative purchasing program for the purchase of road salt. Based on the date established by ODOT to be included in ODOT program, we support this item as emergency legislation, and this too is respectfully submitted by Mr. Swazer, Mr. Severt, and myself as Chair.
Any comments or questions from Council? Thank you, Mr. Kendall.
Thank you.
The Law and Ordinance Committee is next with the liquor license application. Mr. Phillips, in the absence of Mr. Swazer, would you please read that?
Thank you, Madam President. This is a liquor license notice dated April 30th of 2018. The Ohio Division of Liquor Control has transmitted the notice of transfer of the existing liquor permits held in the name of Jennifer Ann Ledoux to the name of 116 West Main Street LLC, Randall Kimmel, for the same address. The permit classifications are D-1, D-2, D-3, and D-3A, which are defined in this memo. Objections must be filed by May 17th, 2018. The Police Department has advised that there is no basis for objection to the application, and this was requested be read at this council meeting.
Thank you. We now open the meeting to citizen comments. At this time, does anyone in the audience have any questions or comments related to any of the agenda items this evening? If so, please come to the microphone and state your name and address. There is a two-minute time limit at this point in the meeting, and Mr. Kerber is our Seeing none then, we'll move on to resolutions and ask Mrs. Knight to read Resolution R-16 2018. Resolution number R-16 2018, resolution approving a loan to the Community Improvement Corporation of Troy, Ohio, for the revitalization of Sherwood Shopping Center and declaring an emergency. This will provide a loan to the Community Improvement Corporation. The Community Improvement Corporation will then loan those funds to the redeveloper. First reading. Are there any questions or comments from Council?
Move for suspension.
Second. It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mrs. Oda to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll. Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Lutz.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mrs. Oda.
Yes.
Mr. Kendall.
Yes.
Mr. Heath.
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Severt and seconded by Mr. Kendall to adopt the resolution. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll. Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Lutz.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mrs. Oda.
Yes.
Mr. Kendall.
Yes.
Mr. Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted. Mrs. Knight, please read Resolution R-17 2018. Resolution number R-17 2018, resolution authorizing participation in the ODOT winter contract O-18-19 for road salt and declaring an emergency. This has to be provided to ODOT by May 18th to be part of the bid. This is the first reading. Are there any questions or comments from Council?
Move to suspend.
Second.
It's been moved by Mrs. Oda and seconded by Mr. Twist to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll. Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Lutz.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mrs. Oda.
Yes.
Mr. Kendall.
Yes.
Mr. Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Move for adoption. I'll second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Heath to adopt the resolution. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll. Mr. Lutz.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mrs. Oda.
Yes.
Mr. Kendall.
Yes.
Mr. Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted. Move on to ordinances and ask Mrs. Knight to read ordinance O-18 2018. Ordinance number O-18 2018, ordinance accepting the final plat of Stonebridge Meadows Plan Development, Section 6 and 7, in the city of Troy, Ohio, and dedicating right-of-way. This has been recommended by the Troy Planning Commission. This is third reading. Are there any questions or comments from Council members?
Yes, Madam Chair. Yes, just a quick comment. There has been good communication between city staff and the developer, and it looks like that there are, on many of the concessions and many of the issues that were coming up, they have agreed to take action on that. So there's been positive movement in this situation. Also, I want to thank the citizens that brought this to everyone's attention. They did it in a respectful way, but a vocal way, which is the right avenue to do that, and so kudos out to them. And so the entire situation, while not perfect, is moving forward in a good direction.
Has there been any actual activity or just agreements that there will be activity?
Yes, so none of the work has been started, but it has been asked to be put into the escrow so that we will have some control over that when it starts happening. The goal is to have that begin when the weather's a little bit drier.
Okay. Mrs. Oda.
I was going to say, I'd like to see this go to another reading until we see some movement on getting things resolved. This is the first, we've not had any updates since the last meeting, and I'm not ready to move forward until we have some concrete updates. I see no problem with going to another reading.
Do we have any objection to that?
I'm going to make a motion to adopt the ordinance.
Okay. Do we have a second to the motion? Okay, the motion fails without a second, and this will go then to a fourth reading. Mrs. Knight, please read ordinance O-20 2018. Ordinance number O-20 2018, an ordinance declaring a moratorium for an additional 180 days on the processing issuance and approval of new occupancy and zoning permits for certain uses and for certain properties commercially zoned in the North Market Street area of the city of Troy, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. This will extend the existing moratorium. First reading. Are there any questions from Council?
Now, I'll move for suspension.
Yep, I'll second that.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Heath to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll. Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mrs. Oda.
Yes.
Mr. Kendall.
Yes.
Mr. Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Lutz.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mrs. Oda.
Yes.
Mr. Kendall.
Yes.
Mr. Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Lutz.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted. Mrs. Knight, please read ordinance O-21 2018. Ordinance number O-21 2018, ordinance amending ordinance number O-30 2017 as amended by ordinance number O-19 2018, appropriating funds necessary for the various departments and offices of the city of Troy, Ohio, for the year 2018. This is a reappropriation to the general fund associated with the loan to the CIC that was in R-16 2018. First reading. Are there any questions from Council?
Move for suspension.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Kendall to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll. Mr. Kendall.
Yes.
Mr. Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Lutz.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mrs. Oda.
Yes.
Move for adoption.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Heath to adopt the ordinance. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll. Mr. Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Lutz.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mrs. Oda.
Yes.
Mr. Kendall.
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted. That completes the business portion of tonight's meeting. Mrs. Knight, are there any communications or announcements? There are not. Mayor Beemich, do you have any comments for us this evening?
I think we're all aware that Leadership Troy, there's many in the audience today, but coming up next Wednesday, May 16th, will be Leadership Government Day, where we get to share our three branches of government with the Leadership Troy, this year's graduating group. So, just wanted to make that, everybody's invited, and it's always a good time and good day for us. Thank you.
Mr. Tidderington, do you have comments?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have several. Given that council authorized bidding for road salt for this coming winter, and with the sincere hope that this winter is finally over, I thought that it would be appropriate to give you just an update on where we ended up this season, as opposed to last season. While we only had two more events than in the 2016-17 season, the types of events that we had were more, much more significant than last season. So we used, the expenses, when you look at the value of the salt, the equipment, the supplies, the labor, et cetera, was 2.6 times more expensive than in 2016-17. We spent approximately $106,500 this season as opposed to $40,500 in the previous season. We used two and a half times more salt, over 1,000 tons this year versus a little over 400 last season. We used just over 2.1 times more in staff time between regular hours and overtime hours. So just to let you know that where we ended up, presuming that we have ended this season again, knock on wood. Second item is, the second and third item, I believe are in your items of interest, but just for public knowledge, the McCagge Phase IV project was awarded to Finfroc. We had several bidders, I want to say six to eight, somewhere in that range. All of them, when they bid, they were very competitive bids all around. They bid less than the authorization of the council, so barring any change orders or unforeseen circumstances, we should be in good shape there. But none of the bidders were going to be able to build the roundabout this summer, given workload, scheduling, equipment needs, et cetera. And so the road phase of that project on McCagge will begin this fall/winter season, and then the roundabout portion will be deferred until next summer because we don't want to disrupt school. And so we'll wait for the tail end of that project rather than on the front end, which we had hoped to do, but we're able to defer that without any additional cost to the project. The third item is, just before this meeting, I did send out a news release, I guess, if you want to call it that, an update on the downtown road diet project that is scheduled to begin next month after the Strawberry Festival. It will consist of reducing the lanes on North Market from Water Street South through the roundabout, south to Simpson. That will shrink to one through lane and a middle turn lane. Again, that will be done over the June-July time period as weather and staff time permits. As part of that, we will be installing the refuge areas, which will consist of potted concrete pots so that when someone, a pedestrian, attempts to cross, if they don't feel they can make the whole intersection, they have an area to stop safely. It's very common throughout the country, and actually internationally. As part of that project, we will be bagging or flashing, eventually removing all four stoplights, even though we will not be, at this time, doing the road diet on West Main Street. That road diet and those expenses and work related to that tie into the West Main larger project that we're designing right now. And so if we try to do the diet too soon, we could jeopardize some safety grant money that we could otherwise receive from ODOT. So we want to time that accordingly because that money could amount to substantial dollars towards that larger project. And as usual, if you have any questions about that, then just please let me know. I believe that's all I have. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you. Director of Law, Mr. Kerber.
I have no report this evening, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you. City Auditor, Mr. Friggi.
Thank you, Madam President, and I have nothing at this time.
Any comments from Council members this evening?
Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Turelliger.
On behalf of the Mayor's Bike Friendly Advisory Committee, we would like to express our appreciation to the Wade Westfall Foundation, who two weeks ago purchased for our students who have special needs in the elementary and junior high school. As part of our safety curriculum that we've developed for the elementary and junior high, they've purchased a Riften adjustable three-wheeled bicycle, which will provide these students of need an opportunity to take part in the safety education program, and it will also be used in the physical education classes to provide outside activities and transportation for the students. It was really a neat thing to see those young men and women receive that bike, and there's genuine appreciation, and Mr. Westfall deserves thanks.
Thank you. Any other?
While we're on the feel-good story that Mr. Twilliger just said, I have a little thing, a nice little treasure of Troy. I'm sure most of you have seen it. I'll pass some of these around. A guy named Justin Amburn, and I'm glad to see Sergeant McKinney here, posted on Facebook, a post of Officer Scott Gates, who actually took time out of his day to mow the grass of an elderly woman who was incapable of doing it her own on a hot day. And, you know, we hear so many stories about our lack of community service or lack of involvement, and this just is clear evidence of the type of people that we have working here that go out of the way to help the citizens of Troy. And I think it's a treasure of Troy, and I wanted to share it and point out to Mr. McKinney that Officer Gates did this. If he hasn't seen it, it's been shared 7,000 times, so I think most people have seen it. But if you haven't, we've got pictures up here, and I just wanted to take a few minutes to share that, and I'm sure Sergeant McKinney will take that back to his staff. But, nice job.
Mr. Kendall? Thank you.
Captain McKinney. It's been a while. I haven't been able to... So...
Thank you. Mr. Kendall.
Okay, thank you, Madam President. Staying a little bit on the feel-good side of things, we, for those of you who don't know, my daughter and I do an event here in Troy called Be the Match. It's a walk-run for those with blood, bone, and cancers, and it's a three-fold event. It's to get people to sign up for a registry to be swabbed for bone marrow and stem cell, and also it's for education. Then there's the financial aspect, too, that we have a walk-run to raise money for that. Well, this year, Be the Match International, out of Minneapolis, Troy, Ohio, has been recognized quite generously in their annual report this year. We have three organizations and companies that have been recognized for their financial support of the event, and that was F&amp;P America, Troy Noon Optimist, and also, gosh, I'm going to forget the third, oh, okay, the Kennedy Medical Center has also been recognized. And to our surprise, my daughter and I was recognized in their report as a significant contribution in the way of a number of volunteer hours and support of the organization. So, we're all very proud of that. We're proud for the city, and, you know, there are some things we're going to do this year that should be getting us even more recognition with the organization, so.
Any further comments from Council members? Any comments from city staff this evening? Let's see, we do have Leadership Troy participants in the audience. If you would, please stand, introduce yourself, and tell us perhaps where you are employed and who you will be representing on your day with the city.
Captain Shoppe. Every day I will be Jeremy's Park's department.
Anyone else? Just move on through.
I'm Mary Paris. I teach at the Durham Junior High, and I will be Robinetta.
I'm Leona Sargent. I'm the exhibit coordinator of Troy Intercultural Center, and I'll be Mr. William Lutz.
I'm Mar Arnold. I'm a CSR for Carron Dickerson Insurance, and I'm going to be Jim Dando and Veronica Short.
I'm Andrea Keller. I work at Partners in Hope, and I'm going to be Todd Seater.
It's Captain McKinney.
I'm Captain Carter, I'm a Trump officer with USPA, and I'll be the HR.
My name's Heather Better. I work for Nollian Company, and I'm the bond broker.
Anyone else? Do you have any questions for us this evening? Or if you want to, if you haven't already and want to talk to your correspondent here that you're going to be representing, we'll try to stick around for a couple of minutes afterwards and take any questions that you might have. Thank you for being here. Are there any questions or comments from the audience this evening?
Thank you for the opportunity to comment. My name is Jack Carter. I live at 995 South Orset Road here in Troy. I'm also an attorney here in town. My office is at 405 Public Square Southwest, Number 253. I'm not here to get on anyone's case. I hope I don't sound mean-spirited by the comments that I make here. I am here to express my concern about what I see as the deterioration of the downtown business district due to noise, due to young guys congregating on the square. I am here to express my concern about what I see as the deterioration of the downtown business district due to noise, due to young guys congregating on the square and racing their motorcycles and cars around the traffic circle, revving up their engines. For a long time, they've been congregating directly in front of my office, in my quadrant. Now it seems like they've moved over to the northeast quadrant where La Piazza used to be located. And to me, the situation has become pretty critical for the quality of life in downtown Troy. I've lived in Troy since 1995, 23 years. My office has been at that location for 12 years, and until recently, I've never seen anything quite like what I see happening in downtown Troy now. It's, it's like these young guys are racing their motorcycles and their cars around the downtown area with impunity. I know the police have a very difficult job, and I'm certainly not, I don't mean to critique them, but I'm wondering, I'm commenting about this, and I was hoping to maybe get some feedback from council about what, if anything, could be done to address this problem. I've already talked informally with Mr. Kendall, with the mayor, with Mr. Davis, the director of Troy Main Street, Nicole Loy. I've also corresponded about this, and I don't mean to be the cranky old man downtown, you know, I just, I just wanna see what, if anything, we can do about this. It's my understanding from talking to the mayor that our curfew statutes or ordinances were recently changed. Is that correct?
They were, yeah, and some of them were. But I'm wondering if we have, first of all, on the, for the people on foot or for the people that are congregating downtown, do we have any loitering type of?
No, and I don't know that constitutionally we can, but I'm not an attorney, so I'd ask Grant.
We do have a noise ordinance, though, correct?
We do. We have a noise.
Noise.
Enforcement, that is difficult, though, as I understand, right? You have to have a meter and actually get a decibel reading. You have to, you have to catch them in the act of doing that. Usually when we use the, the equipment, it's because there's an HVAC from a manufacturer that's too loud, and, you know, we can, we can shoot it at it and.
Yeah, that's a little different than a motorcycle.
Yeah, this is, this is one where if they're racing around, you have to catch them in the act.
When's it occurring, Jack? Is it?
They usually gather shortly after school lets out, and if the weather is good, they'll gather in my quadrant or in, now in the northeast quadrant, sit in business parking spaces. You know, parking is scarce downtown. They sit down there, rev their engines, talk back and forth between cars or text back and forth. They, I mean, I've seen a lot of crazy stuff.
So during business hours?
During business hours and on into the evening hours, as late as 10 o'clock at night. You hear girls screaming as they're being accosted by the boys. You hear the young guys screaming, "Ah!" at the top of their lungs. You, kids sitting on top of an SUV. I've come out of my office and there are kids on the ground between parked cars eating pizza out of a box.
I think we can, you know, and we can request that the police just beef up the, you know, activity or watch the activity as they have time in that area.
I've talked to them, and they've always been very polite. I've made a number of exasperated phone calls. I've talked to Officer Newp, Gummerlock, Beddelen. He's come to my office. And of course, when they park their big white SUV in the middle of the square, everything calms down for a while, but as soon as they're gone, it's right back to crazy. It's a very serious problem. I mean, I don't mean to understate it, and I certainly don't mean to be a crybaby, but, but it's really affecting, I think, the business district in Troy.
I think at this point, we'll make note of it, and all, you know, we'll talk to the police chief and, and see if we can improve.
Is there something we could do to maybe beef up our anti-loitering, anti-noise statutes?
I don't know. We've got, you know, we'll have to discuss it, I think. We'll have to.
Loitering statutes, many of them, I mean, there's some historical precedents where they were used inappropriately against certain members of our society. So, you know, as an, as an attorney, I'm sure you're aware that there's a, quite a bit of history of hostility to those types of law, loitering laws. But there, there potentially could be some other things that could be looked at.
Do we have a disturbing the peace ordinance?
I, I don't know if it's typically a ordinance, and name that disorderly conduct is what's normally referred to, and that's, you know, a case-by-case basis, but some of the activities that you described would certainly satisfy that.
Super-disorderly, and they certainly disturb my peace. I would appreciate whatever council could do to look into this further and perhaps move toward a solution to this problem. It's driving me crazy. I mean, I might even move my office. I'd hate to have to do that, but it's crazy. So thank you for listening.
Okay, thank you.
Madam President?
Mr. Phillips?
Or actually, Mr. Titterington. Is there a way that we can use the camera on top of the 405 building as an enforcement tool in being able to identify or address issues that we have on video as evidence and activity to be monitored by the police department? And in, Mr. Harder, you do know that it takes a victim to be able to prosecute these things? These are not general things that, that just nebulously occur in the court system. So it does take people coming forward if a disorderly conduct or something like that needs to be enforced. It does take a victim, and the state is not necessarily, or the city is not necessarily always the victim in these things. But the camera or other monitoring devices that we have downtown, if we could? We have the downtown webcam that is online. It's on our website. The limitation there is, is there is no sound with that webcam, and, you know, we have used the webcam in the past when we've recorded criminal activity, and that's been included as evidence for other more serious events that, that occurred. It is something that's, that can be used, however, it's not going to aid in, in any noise-related complaints because it's gonna be quiet.
The noise aspect, which is probably the worst part for me, but I am also concerned that sooner or later, someone will be, a pedestrian will be struck, someone will be assaulted, a business will be vandalized. I, I think it's only a matter of time, unless we can take some action. Right now, it's just the noise, but it's getting worse, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for calling it to our attention.
All right. Thank you for your time.
Any other comments or questions from anyone in the audience?
Lori Jackson, 2322, Larkspur Drive. Good evening. I would just like to add a comment to the Stonebridge Meadows Phase 6, 7. And I would ask council to carefully look at what is being asked to be done, and to perhaps also look at a timeline of when things have to be completed. Things like seeding after any regrading is being done. If the asphalt is disturbed with drainage pipes, that has to be repaired. Again, this is, we'd like to see it corrected in a timely fashion, but also if there are other issues, like the seeding, if the asphalt is torn up, we'd also ask that that be included in any agreement that is made with the developer. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Titterington?
That, in fact, restoration work will, will be included in the monitoring that we do, and the, and will be subject to completion prior to us releasing any escrow amounts.
Okay. Thank you. Any other further comments or questions from the audience?
Lester Connor, 1210 South Clay Street, Troy, Ohio. This is for the Service of Safety Director. On the salt issue, didn't you receive back from the people that were selling salt that was gouging a lot of people in Ohio? Did you not receive some money back on that deal?
That was several years ago, yes.
But I mean, did, did you not receive some back?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience have any comments or questions? Thank you all for attending tonight's meeting. Have a safe and peace-filled week. Meeting adjourned.